Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmer's Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 7:02 PM on September 1st, 2016. My name is John Matthews. I'm the Vice President of the Board, and I will be the Presiding Officer tonight in place of Mr. Shore, who is the President, who is still recuperating from his illness. And we miss him, and I can't wait for him to get back, because I love him. Not because I'm scared, it's just because he's the President, I'm not. Please, at this time, please stand and join me as Mr. Tim Kettish from the Branch Church leads the Board's opening prayer. And remain standing as Board Member Randy Shackman leads us in our pledges to the flags.
Holy Father, we come to you tonight. Father, I'm just thankful for this meeting, for this fine organization, for the schools that bless our community and our children. Father, I'm thinking tonight about Frank Shore, and I pray for your blessing of healing to rest on him, that you would restore him to health and wholeness and help him to return. Father, for each of those who are here tonight serving, I pray that you would give them wisdom and insight. For the teachers, Father, that we're honoring tonight, Father, I just say thank you for the way that they bless and enrich the lives of the children under their care, and I pray that you would continue to bless them. For the children in our schools, Father, I pray your protection over them, that you would help them to have a good mind, to listen, to pay attention, and to develop and to grow and to mature and to become all that they were created to be. Father, we are grateful for this time in this place, and for your graciousness in letting us be a part of it. And I pray that your grace and favor would rest on every person in this room tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our Texas flag.
On our Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. The Board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, actions, and decisions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the Board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, all Board members are present, with the exception of Mr. Shore and Mr. Fleming. We do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the district. As required by Board Policy, BBD Local, let the minutes reflect that there are no members deficient in receiving the continuing education training hours required for 2016. We will now proceed with Agenda Item Number Two, and I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Members of the Board, audience, welcome. Okay? It's always good to have a little rain, as long as you're inside when it happens, right? So, we're glad you made it here tonight to hear and see the great things that are happening in CFB. And we started our Board meetings last year, and we're continuing with talking about student achievement. That's why we're here, that's why we exist. So, the first thing on our agenda is always about student achievement. And I don't think it's a secret that we do have that one goal, high achievement for each student. But we do have four objectives to help us get there. We call them guiding objectives appropriately. And tonight, we're going to talk about Objective Two, Improving the Learning Environment, because what we know about students is you can't learn if the environment is not conducive to learning. And learning is connected to social and emotional well-being. As well as a physical environment is important as well, but tonight is about the social and emotional learning environment for our students. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Warnock to talk to us tonight about Objective Number Two, Improving the Learning Environment.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. I want you to take a minute, as the adults in this room, and think through your day. All of us traveled to get here, we had to get up early, we may be rushed to get kids ready to go to school, we might have lost a homework assignment along the way, or something didn't work out the way we needed it to today. We made a million different decisions in the course of our work, and rushed maybe to get a bite to eat, and then to get here tonight. We live in a fast-paced world in which we, as adults, experience a lot of stress. And we have students coming to us from homes where they also are experiencing stress, and some of them, what we would call toxic stress. So, when we have children who are exposed to traumatic events at a young age, it impairs their ability to self-regulate emotions and to build what we call executive function, our ability to, you know, build those tools that help us be successful later on in life. A big part of the learning environment is preparing students with the tools to self-regulate, to monitor, and to build that executive function. So, tonight, we welcome Jo Gillan, our Executive Director of Counseling Career Technology Education in Nurses, to share with us about improving the learning environment.
Thank you, Ms. Warnock. Welcome, Dr. Burns, and esteemed members of the Board. It is with great excitement that we come to you this evening to share a few of the techniques we have found to be beneficial in the classroom when we redirect a portion of our attention to the social and emotional needs of students. Twenty-six percent of children will witness or experience a traumatic event before they turn four. When applying these numbers to our CFB population, this would equate to approximately 6,500 students who are coming to our schools negatively impacted by a variety of home and community stressors. Considering an average class size of 24, six out of the 24 students would likely be experiencing some level of emotional distress. Before students are able to learn academically, we have to be able to meet their basic social and emotional needs. One research-based strategy currently being implemented in several of our campuses is the concept of mindfulness. As we look at the why of mindfulness, we know that our students' brains are adaptable and can be changed to adapt more positively to emotional triggers. Additionally, students can be taught that their thoughts are just thoughts. When students learn to recognize how emotions manifest in their bodies and behavior, they can then actively utilize mindfulness strategies to engage in impulse control. According to a meta-analysis of 213 studies performed at Loyola and the University of Chicago, students who participated in SEL, Social Emotional Learning Programs, gained an average of 11 percentage points more on achievement tests than youngsters who didn't take part in the programs. Mindfulness can be simple in its definition. It is a purposeful practice. It involves being present in the moment. Using mindfulness techniques, students discover how to mediate a conflict, or how to verbally express and explain their emotions to improve communication. As illustrated in the graphic, students may come to school with their mind full of the chaos of their surroundings, but are able to settle their thoughts and feelings through the use of mindfulness techniques so that they can focus on the learning. We would now like for you to see a video featuring CFB teachers and students demonstrating the how and the why of mindfulness in action.
We have to remember that a lot of our kids are dealing with things outside of school. And if they've got all of those stressors, and then we're asking them to pay attention to academics, they need a way to be able to segue from that stress and learn how to deal with that stress so that they can focus on academics. And so, that's where this piece of settling your glitter and mindfulness comes in, because if they have so much stress at home, they're not going to be able to learn multiplication or division or up their reading scores. They need to figure out how to self-regulate and calm themselves so that they can soak in the academics that we're trying to teach them.
As the video illustrates, mindful techniques are taught to help children learn to self-regulate and be more aware of their responses and equip them for learning. While the preceding example focused on elementary students, we will now examine how mindfulness techniques can benefit older students as well.
So, how was the first day of school?
It was fine, I guess. I don't know.
Do you ever look at someone and wonder, "What is going on inside their head?"
Did you guys pick up on that?
Sure did.
Something's wrong.
We're going to find out what's happening, but we'll need support. Signal the husband.
Ahem.
Uh-oh, she's looking at us.
Signal him again.
Ah, so, Riley, how was school?
Ugh!
You've got to be kidding me!
School was great, all right?
What was that? I thought you said we were going to act casual!
Riley, is everything okay?
Sir, she just rolled her eyes at us!
Riley, I do not like this new attitude.
Oh, I'll show you attitude, old man!
No, 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 breathe!
What is your problem? Just leave me alone!
I'm sure those of us who have older children or who teach middle or high school students have experienced this type of interaction. Adolescence, the period between childhood and adulthood, can be a time of disoriented Let's listen to how one middle school is working to meet the emotional needs of their middle school students using another mindfulness program called Brainology. Using principles from Carol Dweck's Mindset Curriculum, students discover how the brain works and how the brain can get stronger and smarter through effort and learning.
We don't have any cures for adolescents, it is just a part of biology. But knowledge is power, and it's power for us as adults and caretakers and educators, and it's power for our students that we need to teach them, this is how your brain works, this is why certain things happen at the wrong time, and this is why you feel this way when everything seems like it's falling apart. And then, the crucial component is teaching them coping skills, how to manage these feelings and emotions and reactions, and how to monitor and self-regulate, how to practice self-control, practice mindfulness, practice focus.
As noted in this video, both students and staff see the benefit of actively attending to and regulating emotions. As stated in the recent article, "Emotions Matter" by Mark Brackett and Deanna Simmons, cultivating the emotional intelligence of both students and teachers is our best hope for safe, caring, and effective schools. In closing, I would like to introduce the Principal of Davis Elementary, Lisa Williams, who has brought with her some special guests this evening. They have been instrumental in the implementation of mindfulness, along with demonstrating techniques that they've practiced at their campus.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We began this journey about three years ago in learning and awareness of what mindfulness is, with the definition of being mindful is paying attention with kindness to myself, others, and the world around me. And that's, that was the thinking that we began with, and that journey has taken us a long way. So, I brought some teachers with me tonight, and, you know, the, this is really about student achievement, and while we're teaching self-regulation, the idea is to close that achievement gap. And so, I want to give you a couple of examples of closing that achievement gap. So, Mrs. Nguyen, would you stand up with Ms. Christensen, please? This is our bilingual ESL team of fourth-grade teachers, and Ms. Christensen teaches math, Mrs. Nguyen teaches English, Language Arts, except in Spanish. And so, Ms. Christensen had an advanced rate of 46 percent. That is huge on star, 46 percent. The same, and they took that test in a second language, you understand that. Ms. Nguyen had 100 percent, meeting the standard in writing, and 59 percent advanced. That is, yes. And I will tell you that they were a little bit skeptical of the process, and then Ms. Nguyen decided, "You know what? If I have five minutes to teach, and if those kids are not focused with me and breathing and calm, they're not going to learn it anyway." And so, she had a journey, and she is a believer, and her advanced rate improved from like 36 or 39 percent advanced to 59 this year. So, it works. It definitely works. Thank you, ladies, so much. Ms. Puente, would you stand, please? You saw her on the video with the kindergartners breathing, and so, when they start at five years old and they know exactly what to do and how to calm themselves, it makes everybody's life so much better, and their lives, too. These little girls have been breathing with us and settling their glitter for three years now. So, we're going to go to the front, and they're going to explain to you.
Are you ready to learn, please, Board?
Are you? Okay, start, they're ready.
So, what we're here for is mindfulness. Mindfulness helps us concentrate, remember, and focus on our writing. We are working up times, not to work on our, focus on our frustrations. We are working on our calmness and peacefulness. So, this is a breathing board. A breathing board helps you, a breathing ball, a breathing ball helps you calm down classes, even yourself. If you have one at home, you can use it by regulation. Regulation means calming yourself down. No matter what, it actually, actually calms your...
Okay, tell them what to do.
We are going to breathe like three or five times, no matter what.
Slowly breathe in. Tell them to slowly breathe in.
We are going to slowly breathe in. We are going...
Please breathe in, please.
Now...
You want to say something else?
Now, we are going to give this to...
Ashley.
Ashley. So, how the glitter jar works, this is called a glitter jar. It's basically called a glitter jar because the glitter is all our emotions, and this is our brain example, it's a model. And so, each time we flip our lid, this, this is, this is flipping our lid, and when you're very calm, you, this is called, you're calm and you're ready to go. This is how your brain looks with, with, with everything around, emotions everywhere, you're sad, you're mad, and confused, you're not calm at all. So, what you do with it is you have to shake it, and then you have to put it on the table, and then watch it settle. When it settles down, it means that, that you're calming down and you're, you're ready to learn and that you, and that you already put like your mind to work, you can focus on what you want to do. We have glitter jars all for you, and we have braces also, which has settled your glitter with, whenever you get mad or angry, you can look down to this, and then you start breathing in really slowly, and then it makes you calm. So, you can have a practice class.
We want to thank our amazing student demonstrators and our staff from Davis Elementary. I was at Davis Elementary, and a little boy, who I will call Josh, came out of the classroom to talk to me about settling his glitter. And he said, "Ms. Warnock, I really wish I'd had this glitter jar in kindergarten, it could have helped me a lot." So, we see that it is making a difference in the lives of children. So, thank you to our Davis team, thank you, ladies, beautiful job.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Warnock. The Board members, do you have any questions about the presentation? Mr. Gud.
Did I understand, Ms. Williams, that you said you have certain educators who will spend the first five minutes of their class period?
The first five minutes, sometimes it's the last, sometimes it's when they come in from recess or specials, if they've been very active and they need to calm down, or with little ones, if they just lose their focus, because it can take 30 seconds, and they read.
Is this all teachers on camp, your campus?
Teachers, is that 100%? Yes. And Ms. LaFrenier and Ms. Tressler, would you stand up for a second? They presented this summer to over 100 teachers at Learn More, Achieve More, all of the techniques.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Shackman.
campuses are we actually doing, because there were a few, but, and are we going to get to expand?
Well, you know what? We are expanding. And you can walk through lots of secondary campuses now, and you'll see glitter jars, and people come back and report to me, like my diagnostician this week said, "I was over at Bush, and I watched a child interact on his own with the glitter jar." And that's at middle school. High school teachers have them, they're around. So, as you're in schools and talking to people, I hope that you'll notice.
Good. Well, thank you for all that all of you are doing with this. And, young ladies, thank you very much. My wife is going to be happy.
Any other questions or comments, Board members? The next Agenda Item is recognition of special guests and announcements. Dr. Burns.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. And members of the Board, as you know, tonight, we're going to recognize and honor our staff that we affectionately recall and refer to as our VIPs, are our very important professionals. You know, and in fact, this is the 31st year that we have been recognizing VIPs in CFB. And so, you could also call it a recognition, or you should also, you could also call it a Hall of Fame induction, okay? So, what we're going to do tonight, CFB educators, VIPs, we're going to induct you into the CFB VIP Hall of Fame, okay? So, you do have your Hall of Fame speech ready, right? Okay, that your principals didn't tell you you had a Hall of Fame speech to go? Okay. It will not be like the NFL, it will not be unlimited. But we do want to recognize you as being a Hall of Fame member of the very important profession of teaching. And so, how do you get into the Hall of Fame? You do something great, right? You do something outstanding. Your peers recognize you as being a top performer in your profession. And in CFB, we recognize that, we recognize that as you're making a difference for kids, okay? You're impacting student achievement at the highest level, and you impact it for each kid, our students and our kids. So, your principals are going to read a little bit more about why you're being inducted into the CFB VIP Hall of Fame tonight, and we'll know a little bit more about your particular accomplishments. When your principal reads your name, you're going to come up to the front, Mr. Matthews and I are going to stand with you. We'd also invite other members that helped you get to the Hall of Fame to stand when your name is introduced. And we also want to make you aware, you have a bag in front of you, those are Hall of Fame gifts, okay? And those are compliments of our friends from Brookhaven Country Club, who want to thank you for all that you do for the students of CFB, and also recognize you as a Hall of Fame member in the VIPs, okay? Mr. Matthews, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I think we need to give it up for these young ladies one more time. How great were they? So, I get to follow them. Thank you, ladies, I appreciate it. Great job, great job. Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Matthews, members of the Board, guests. Good evening, my name is Matt Warnock. I am honored to serve as Principal at Barbara Bush Middle School, International Baccalaureate World School, and I am honored to present to you Ms. Abby Peterson as a member of the very important profession of teaching. This is Ms. Peterson's fourth year as a Bush Bronco and her fifth year as an educator. She is a graduate of Cedarville University in Ohio, but made it to Texas as soon as she could. Ms. Peterson, also known as Coach P, teaches seventh grade Language and Literature and IDS, coaches girls athletics, serves as our Language and Literature Instructional Facilitator, as well as serves as the co-chair of our PBIS Committee. In preparation for her recognition, I asked her peers to send me simply a sentence or two about her to add to the presentation. Either my instructions were poorly communicated, or her peers cannot limit their comments to simply a sentence or two when speaking of her. The following are a few condensed excerpts from their reflections. "Abby is a true team player and is willing to help everyone to be successful. Her first priority is truly her kids, and to her, they really are her kids, not just her students. Every word she says, every class she teaches, every sports team she coaches, every paper she grades, goes on to change lives. Abby is a passionate professional. She takes education seriously and is an advocate for our schools and the community. Abby loves her students and works tirelessly to help them succeed. The amount of effort Abby puts into every lesson and the high expectations she has for all of her classes show that she truly intends to help every student achieve all that they can. Teaching is not just her job, it is her calling. What makes Abby a fabulous teacher is her ability to build strong relational capacity between herself and her students, whether she is helping them perfect their serve on the volleyball court, or talking to them about her favorite new YA adult novel. Abby works very hard to try and make some type of connection with each student she encounters. Her students had thoughts to share as well. The following are comments from her previous students. Every day is a new day for Ms. Peterson. Any students that were not outstanding the day before had a new chance the next day. Ms. Peterson inspired me to take my writing and share it with the world." Ms. Peterson inspired me to take my writing and share it with the world. She also encouraged me to put more effort into my work. What I remember most about Coach Peterson is her enthusiasm and her optimism. She was always helpful and had a positive response to everything in class. She loves everyone for who they are and accepts all of us. She finds the best in everyone. Ms. Peterson is a great teacher because she doesn't only love her job and is passionate about teaching, she also loves her students. She loves to get to know her students, which can help in class so that we feel safe and trusted in class. Unforgettable is the best way to describe Ms. Peterson. Each day was a new experience which made each day unforgettable. Thank you, Ms. Peterson, for all you do for all in the Bronco family. CFB and Barbara Bush Middle School are fortunate that you have chosen us as your professional home. Congratulations on being selected as a member of a very important profession in teaching. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Phil Jackson, the principal at Carrollton Elementary School. I am pleased and honored to introduce our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Rhonda Peterson. So sometimes you have those teachers that are so flamboyant, so full of energy, so over the top exciting, that you just have to stand back in awe of all the theatrics in their classroom. Ms. Peterson is not one of those teachers. What Ms. Peterson brings to the classroom is her calm, quiet, focused, and encouraging presence. Her teammates listed these as the fine attributes of Ms. Peterson. High math scores, every year among the highest percent passing in the district, encouraging culture, always prepared, willing to help others, positive attitude, high expectations. I asked one of Ms. Peterson's former students, Rosalind, what she thought of her, and she said that Ms. Peterson lights up the room. She went on to say, if we look bored or lazy, she would tell a joke, make us stand and move to wake up, and encourage us to do our best. She made everyone do their best. I've had many occasions to sit in Ms. Peterson's class. I would love for my own children, or now grandchildren, to be in her class. I know that her high expectations, her methodological, methodical planning, and her individual encouragement for each student would make my children great mathematicians. If I were in her class, I would repeat the ode to teachers by Patton Maura. It fits so beautifully with what each child would have to say about Ms. Peterson's class. I remember the first day, how I looked down, hoping you wouldn't see me. And when I glanced up, I saw your smile shining like a soft light from deep inside you. I'm listening, you encourage us, come on, join our conversation. Let us hear your neon certainties, thorny doubts, tangled angers. But for weeks, I hid inside. I read and reread your notes praising my writing and you whispered, we need you in your stories and questions that like a fresh path will take us to new vistas. Slowly, your faith grew into my courage. And for you, instead of handing you a note or apple or flowers, I raised my hand. I carry your smile and faith inside like I carry my dog's face, my sister's laugh, creamy melodies, the softness of sunrise, steady blessings of stars, autumn smell of gingerbread, the security of a sweater on a chilly day. Carrollton Elementary is a better and happier place to teach and learn because of Ms. Peterson. And that is why we are proud to honor Rhonda Peterson as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns and members of the board. My name is Susan Machio, principal of Farmers Branch Elementary. I would like to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Brittany Acuna. Brittany, Brittany is in her third year of serving as our counselor at Farmers Branch Elementary. Prior to coming to FBE, she taught second, third, and fourth grades in Little Elm ISD. When she isn't pouring her time and energy into our students, Brittany spends her spare time with her husband Domingo and their two fur babies. They are a very active couple who enjoy working out and traveling. As her principal, I quickly learned that the word no is not in Brittany's vocabulary. She has truly transformed the counseling program at our school. The staff at FBE cannot say enough wonderful things about Brittany. One of them said, she goes above and beyond what her job description entails as a counselor. She always asks if she can help the teachers. She gives creative ideas toward the betterment and beautification of the school. And she looks after the well-being of all students. She genuinely cares about each person on this campus. I have not been around her when she has anything but positive things to say. She has been a great addition to the FBE family. Another colleague shared with me, Brittany greets you with a smile and truly cares about how you're doing. She wears the counselor hat well. The students love to talk with her and know that she has their best interests at heart. She helps set limits and goals with those who need help controlling themselves. So she's our own glitter ball, glitter bottle right there. And she guides students to become the best they can be by setting personal goals. She is just as pleased when a student reaches their goal as they are. She even teared up when a student she worked with extensively in the past returned this year from a different school district. She truly cares about the long term of our students, she's one in a million. Another colleague said, Brittany deserves the VIP award from our school because she models the characteristics of a person who stands out in her profession. In this case, as a counselor. She always takes the time to listen to teachers and their concerns, taking the appropriate actions and following up with us so that we feel that our voice was heard. One can tell from her relationships and approaches to the students that she truly wants to meet their needs so that they can be successful in the classroom and in life. What I really appreciate about Brittany is that she works with teachers from an empathy perspective, acknowledging that our time is valuable and she's always willing to work around our schedules, whether it comes to individual student needs or classroom guidance. She always smiles and is a positive force in our school. Some of our FBE Mustangs shared their thoughts with me about Mrs. Acuna. When asked why he thought Mrs. Acuna deserved this award, Joseph responded, she lets my imagination go wild and she's helpful to me when I'm having a really tough day. One time, she gave me a Kermit the Frog stuffed animal and I still have it in my toy box at home. Marco shared, Mrs. Acuna is super nice. You can tell her anything and she acts like she's interested. Even, and he was like very animated, I can't even do it. He said, even if you're telling her about a piece of dirt, she cares. She is very supportive to all of us. She has helped some of my friends who are in a bad mood. And after they see her, they come back smiling. It's like magic. And for that reason, Farmers Branch Elementary and CFB are fortunate to have Mrs. Brittany Acuna as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Vice President Matthews, Dr. Burns, and members of the school board. My name is Debbie Williams, principal of Kent Elementary. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce and honor Tiffany Cervantes as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Social media plays a major role in our lives today. In the Twitter world, hashtags are used to identify messages on specific topics. Our staff chose the following hashtags to describe Tiffany. Tonight, I invite the guest in the audience to tweet using these hashtags about any of our district VIPs. Hashtag Walks the Talk. It's common to see Tiffany working in her classroom in July, long before teachers are required to report, to ensure that the environment is one that children will be excited to enter each day. Tiffany ensures that all students reach their potential and is unwavering even when challenged. Her dependability makes her an outstanding teammate. Hashtag On The Move. Tiffany has taught first, second, and currently teaching third grade. This summer, she completed the CFB Homegrown Reading Academy to ensure she is on the cutting edge of instruction. Tiffany embraces technology to encourage, or to engage students in her classroom. Hashtag No Status Quo. Tiffany has high expectations for students. She constantly pushes herself to create new ways of teaching content. Tiffany sees the need of the individual child and takes a, we carry them if we have to, attitude. And she's carried many. Hashtag Ray of Sunshine. Tiffany always has a smile on her face. Parents and students describe Ms. Cervantes as being loving, caring, and kind. She demonstrates patience in all situations. Hashtag Dedicated To You. Colleagues describe Tiffany as being trustworthy, accountable, and full of compassion. Tiffany understands the importance of a good relationship with students, parents, and colleagues. She's a campus leader. Her roles have included serving on the CIC, being a GT liaison, and serving on various committees. Tiffany is also a dedicated wife and a mother to twin boys. Kent Elementary is proud to recognize Tiffany Cervantes as a very important professional.
Good evening, my name is Dreama Mayfield, principal at La Vita Elementary. I am here tonight, along with many La Vita leopards, to recognize Dawn Fisher as a member of the very important profession of teaching. Ms. Fisher was in the corporate world for many years, but we were so lucky to have her join Team CFB nine years ago. Dawn began her career in CFB as a teacher assistant and went to school in the evening to earn her teaching degree. She's in the right place now, teaching and loving first graders. I'm sure all of us who are here tonight can remember their first grade teacher. First grade teachers make such an impression on young lives. And Ms. Fisher is no exception. She's dedicated to each and every one of her students, or her blueberries, as she calls them. She makes all students feel welcomed, loved, and exciting, excited about everything they are doing. She has the ability to incorporate fun and challenging tasks into the learning environment every day. Ms. Fisher has so many passions in life that make her an intriguing colleague to speak with. From learning Italian to her interest in photography. And Dr. Burns, I believe you have got to benefit from some of those pictures that she has shared. And she also I know, huh, yes. And she also does the food blogging, but she loves to cook. But she loves to try those new restaurants on the weekend as well. Her family is important to her. And her mother and her daughter Kate, who's a graduate of CFB, are here tonight to support her. Her dad will be watching this later as he couldn't be here tonight. Dawn loves to travel and by using technology, she brought her brilliant blueberries on her winter trip to Italy. And she opened their eyes to a whole new world of possibilities that await them. Her colleagues will tell you that Dawn Fisher is hilarious. She's passionate, she's silly, she's goofy with the students, and she makes learning fun. One staff member added, if I had a child, I would want them to be in Ms. Fisher's class. But then, I want to be in her class as an adult. She is a dancing machine and knows the lyrics to almost every song. If you like to dance, come visit her classroom on Fridays and join her dance party. Dawn has a contagious laugh that will brighten anyone's day. She lights up La Vita with her humor and there's never a Dawn moment when she's close by, especially in our staff meetings. Yes, okay. Her teammates say, Dawn is an incredible team leader and was a wonderful mentor to me during my first year of teaching. She always keeps us prepared and informed. She's personable and makes even stressful situations manageable and fun. She cares about us and our well-being and never hesitates to send a text or to call if she knows there is something bothering us or something that we're struggling with. She has your back, no matter what. Ms. Fisher is a La Vita leopard who wears her spots proudly each and every day. She's truly a wonderful coworker, teacher, and friend. We are proud to honor Dawn Fisher as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. And for the first time, I get to do a little talking here before we move on, and I'm really honored to do that. This part of our board meetings is always my favorite part. Yeah, we have to take care of some business later on, but this is, this is where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. I'll give Ms. Warnock another outstanding report, Ms. Gillen and Ms. Williams, who I'm pretty sure had to get home with those two little kiddos. Well, there she is, I'm sorry. Yes. I've known Lisa for a long time and whenever we have kids that get up and do stuff here, that just, I love that. That's the most important thing to me and the most fun to watch. And are those two little girls still here? They had, it's a school night, okay. But I just love that kind of stuff. I love this, this thing, I'm sure that my wife will show it to me on a regular basis. And I love my bracelet, it matches my outfit. I'm all good with that. So thank you, very, very good report. And to you five right here that we recognized tonight. I could talk for a long time, but I won't because we have some other things to do. The fact that so many of your colleagues are here tonight to support you, that right there speaks volumes of your importance to that campus. I mean, this is a school night and they have, they've worked today, I assume, and they're going to work tomorrow. And for them to give up part of their evening just to come to support you speaks volumes. And I love the passion in which your principals get over there and talk about you. It's, it's, you know, obvious that they too care deeply about you. But bottom line, when it's all said and done, you five and others like you in our district are the catalysts that help us reach our goal of high achievement for all students. And for that, we sincerely thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, before moving on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so during the agenda item number four A, Audience For Guests. Please submit your request to do so on one of the forms provided on the table just outside the boardroom door. You may place the completed form in the box You may place the completed form in the box provided on that same table or present your completed form to Administrative Assistant Ms. Sharon Scrivener right over here. And when the Board addresses Agenda Item Number 4A, Audience for Guests, you will be invited to the podium to speak to the Board. That being said, we will now take a brief recess. We encourage you all to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but in case you have to go, this might be a good time, but we really would like you to stay. We're going to take a brief recess, and we will return at five minutes after eight. This meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called back to order. The Board will now address Agenda Item Number 4A, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism the Board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. Comments should pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Mr. Ramos, will provide a hand signal at the end of your three minutes, as the end of your three minutes approaches. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board may defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. Ms. Scrivener, are there any Audience for Guests this evening?
You have them all registered.
I have received some Audience for Guest forms. When I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. First up, Terri Lynn.
Good evening. I'm Terri Lynn, Councilman Terri Lynn from Farmers Branch. I live at 13215 George Street in Farmers Branch. Dr. Burns and members of the Board, thank you for allowing me a few moments. As a taxpayer, I'd like to see exactly what justifies a 12.4% tax increase. In a time when many cities are looking to cut tax rates, mainly due to increases in appraised values of property, and in considering that this school district received about $15.7 million in additional revenue through increased property values, the taxpayers would like to know what justifies your action. Farmers Branch is benefiting from the same growth that the school district is experiencing and is currently looking at lowering our tax rate. Your proposed actions are contrary to that. As Farmers Branch develops, so too will the school district benefit. We have between $800 million and $1 billion worth of development headed our way, which will mean even more revenue for the district. Your tax increase could very quickly put a halt to all of that, not only for Farmers Branch, but also for Carrollton. We recently learned that the school district doesn't want to place an elementary school in the Mercer Crossing area in the midst of 600 to 800 new homes. Those residents will not have the luxury of a neighborhood school to serve as an anchor for their community. Your representative said that the students out there can attend Irving schools, but yet you'll continue to take their tax dollars. Is that the right thing to do? So, I'm here tonight to ask you, is there a way that we, the city, and you, the district, can sit down and discuss this matter and the West Side Development Plan? I'm not sure this has been done before. It seems like it would be a good business practice to do. Six to 800 new homes, which could possibly grow to 1,000, should probably have their own school. The taxpayers of Farmers Branch are very interested in learning about long-range strategic plans for district property in our city. It would be great for us to be able to work together to maximize these assets for the greatest possible good of the community, our schools, and the city. And finally, what can we say, or what can we, the city, do to increase communication and support between the district and Farmers Branch? We want to be a strong partner with you to help build strong schools and a strong community. Your actions are going to have long-term impact on the growth and redevelopment occurring both in Farmers Branch and Carrollton. Proper planning and budgeting will get you where you need to be in the long run, but this proposed tax increase is not the right solution. As a council member and representative of taxpayers and Farmers Branch, I would welcome the opportunity for us to work together to craft a proper solution to this issue. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Burns. My name is Shirley Tarpley. I live at 1507 Mollamway in Carrollston, Texas. I'm here to speak about the natatorium, and I believe most buildings seem to be in this district. On Monday through Fridays, on most days unless I have a meeting or an appointment, from 11:00 to approximately 1:30 PM, I go to the natatorium for water exercise. It is helpful to me, and it keeps my doctor happy since my neck blockage. She tells me, "Just move the muscles." Hmm, I wonder if I die, was she losing her source of income for me here, now that I think about it? Oh, so, for one hour, I walk the pool forward, backwards, do jumping jacks, and all of that nice stuff for my doctor. One day, since I didn't have my usual paths to go back to the back showers with me, I decided to carry my walker and all of my equipment. Barker saw me at the door and came to the door to open it for me so that I would not have to struggle to open the doors, push the walkers in, and come in. I thanked him for his concern and help. Then I made a comment that some other employers in the district at the pool were not taught how to be as polite, obviously, to do this at home. Barker asked me what I meant by their statement, and I told him that the day before and other times that I used the walker, no one bothered to help. But there are others that every day they must use their walker. One particular day, this slightly middle-aged lady that brings her mother when she comes, she had to struggle to go through that first door and then the second door, and she does this every time she comes to the pool. And I was kind of in the back, and I couldn't walk fast enough to get up there to help her. So, when I told Barker this, he said, "You don't have to worry about that again." And he has kept his word. The lady was there with her mother today, and the guards got up and went and helped the doors open for her to come in. So, this started me to thinking. I was on city council when the ADA was passed and enforced. So, then I begin to wonder, how is it that Carrollton Farmers Branch is not required to put those handicap doors at the natatorium? And then, really, they're not even out here. But I never noticed that because when I come up here, someone always helps and opens the door for me. And that's my concern, is that we need to fit these doors, especially at the natatorium, because I'm telling you, there are six people that really need those every day. And now, I was just lazy that day because I can open the door myself and come in. It's just that when I done walked the pool for one hour, I don't want to walk way down there by myself. Okay, so now, I did tell him this, and I'm sitting down. Now, you know, Dr. Burns can do a lot, but we won't look for those doors to be put up Monday morning. We'll give him at least another week before he put up the doors.
Next up would be John Delorme.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Vice President Matthews, and the Board. My name is John Delorme, and I live at 6643 Daleon Street in Irving, Texas, 75039. I am president of the Villas of Sina Los Colinas Homero Association and a taxpayer for the second time in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. I have a brief comment about our presentation this evening about the VIPs. Fortunately enough that we had two schools that are actually in my feeder pattern where I live in my development, that we were able to honor our teachers at our middle school, Bush Middle School, and our elementary, La Vida. I have to say that as a product of the Texas public school system, I certainly would not be as successful as I have been without great public education and teachers. So, our teachers are really the heart and soul of our district and how we get high student achievement. And I have to say, in particular for our elementary school, La Vida, it is exemplary. It's the best school in this district, not just to say that because it serves my neighborhood, it's what the academic performance is. And it actually is the pride of all of our neighborhoods that it serves, not just mine, but all those subdivisions around me. So, I'm proud to be here tonight where we had recognition of two of our great teachers that are schools in my area. And I too am concerned about what our growth in Los Colinas, as we have growth as well as Councilman Lynn mentioned in the western side of Farmers Branch. That's also zoned Irving schools. So, I think all of us that live west of I-35 in the district, A. in Farmers Branch or Irving, are concerned about the new developments going in, how that will impact our schools. Are we going to have enough capacity with these new developments going in? So, I too share those concerns, and I want to make sure that La Vida, Bush Rancho High School, which is 19th and State of Texas, stay that way. So, I will fight any effort to downgrade our schools in my area or throughout this district because how our schools perform directly affects our property values and our ability to get businesses, key businesses, and bring new residents to our area. Thank you.
As stated earlier, the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. However, the Board may refer the comments to the Administration for further review or research. Are there any other Audience for Guests who would like to speak to the Board? We will move on now to Agenda Item Number Four, Board Operations, and Item Number B, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items, and the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the Consent Agenda, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda at this time? I defer to Dr. Burns. Administration has one.
We have one. We need to correct the type of, so Ms. Killman, you want to notify them of that?
Yes, sir. We would like to remove Agenda Item 4B-1D.
Item 4B-1D?
Yes.
Item 4D-1B, consider exercising the extension option of RFP 14-03-1412 for library media supplies and repairs.
Yes.
We'll pull that one forward after the motion of consent.
Okay.
Motion to approve consent.
Mr. Goode?
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda with the removal of Item 4B-1D.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Ms. Klein?
I will second that motion.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Dr. Burns?
Yes. Ms. Killman, you want to make that correction?
Yes. On this item, we realize that the RFP number posted on the summary, 14031412, was incorrect. The RFP number is 14081412. All of the detail in the executive summaries had the correct RFP number, so we just wanted that correct when it was voted upon, and this is an extension of a four-year contract.
I would make a motion to approve for B-1D. As amended?
I have a motion. I have a motion to accept the amended item. Do I have a second? Have a second, Mr. Shackman. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is Consider All Matters Incident and Related to the Issuance and Sale of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2016, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bonds, establishing parameters for the sale and issuance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to authorized officials of the district. And this is an action item. Dr. Burns?
Yes. Mr. Matthews, members of the Board, as you heard earlier, we had an objective on improving the learning environment. As you know, we have another objective, is to constantly be operationally effective and efficient, where we can find ways to save dollars and to be more efficient with both our M&amp;O and our debt side, we want to do so. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tanya to tell you about this opportunity that we think is certainly beneficial to the school district. So, Ms. Killman?
Thank you. We're happy to report this evening due to the current bond market being at all-time lows. We have the opportunity to refund portions of our 2007 and 2008 bond issues. This is not new money that we'll be using on new facilities. This is simply a refunding, which means we're refunding old debt that had a higher interest rate for new debt, which will have a lower interest rate. This impacts our taxpayers significantly in a positive way because it lowers the yearly debt service that we are required to meet with our debt service tax rate. Since 2010, the district has completed six refundings with an overall savings of $23.9 million to our taxpayers over the life of our debt. The initial estimated savings for this refunding was expected to be $7.6 million. However, given the current structure of our debt and the size of this refunding, we have the opportunity to increase that savings to our taxpayers to $12.9 million total. We'll be able to do this by shortening the maturity schedule from 17 years to 11 years. This will significantly reduce the interest that we would be paying over the new debt, and we would do this utilizing our current property values and not increasing our yearly amount over where we're at right now, so we would keep our tax rate at the same as where we're at or lower as it goes down. The parameter bond order being presented for your approval is what authorizes staff to act on behalf of the district in selling the bonds. Certain parameters have to be met in order to complete the sale. We do this so that we can go out into the market in optimal timing to get the lowest rates possible for the district. We do have bond counsel here this evening if you have any specific questions related to the bond order.
Excuse me. Board members, this item is an agenda, this agenda item is marked for action. Do I have a motion? Mr. Shackman?
Before we get to the motion, and I'll be happy to make that
Before we get to the motion, and I'll be happy to make that motion in a second, I just want to review some points, especially if people are watching this live or later. What we are doing, Ms. Tillman, is we're not increasing the district's debt. We are reducing by almost $13 million in interest that we will pay over the indebtedness that is here, and we are refunding, as many people are doing nowadays, to go out and refinance their house to be more operationally efficient.
That's correct.
And I just want everybody to know, because this is a good deal, and staff needs to be commended for helping to find it and bring it to us, Board. And with that, I would move that we authorize the parameter bond order for the sale of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2016, as recommended by staff.
I have a motion from Mr. Shakeman. Do I have a second? Mr. Goode?
Second.
All those in favor? That vote is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is comments from board members. We've reached the agenda item, this for comments, and Item Number 5A, Regarding Posted Agenda Items. Do any of you have any comments you wish to make at this time? Ms. Scrivener, let the record show that Mr. Fleming has made it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fleming, for making the effort to be here. I mean, I know you were...I know you had extenuating circumstances, but you got it. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is a closed meeting as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071-Consultation with Attorney, 551.072-Real Property, 551.074-Personnel Matters, 551.076-Security Devices, 551.082-School Children/District Employees/Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.0821-Personally Identifiable Student Information, 551.084-Investigation. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Legal Matters in Irving, TIF Number 1, and Farmers Branch, TIF Number 1. Audience members are welcome to remain here in the boardroom. Members will recess to the Executive Conference Room for deliberations on closed-meeting items. This meeting is recessed at 8:26 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, I can reconvene this open meeting at 9:06 PM. Board members, are there any comments you wish to make at this time regarding items discussed in closed session? Hearing none, seeing none. By my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 9:07 PM.